Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Von Rudenberger's absent, Deputy Mayor Kennesaw.
Here.
Mayor Simms.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pataglian.
Here.
Mayor LaRocque.
I don't know what you're saying.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and date and toll of four days. And second notice having been published before, a copy on file at City Court Office and a copy posted on the full authority of the court.
Just fart out from the microphone.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
Turn it up a little bit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. Justice for all. Thank you. With that, we'll move right on to the agenda, please. Ted?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council, invited guests. This is the City Council Committee of the Whole Agenda for August 18, 2020, at 6:00 P.M. First is discussion item for Fair Share Housing Center settlement agreement with Nancy Holm. Steve Climan, do you want to take the lead, please?
Yes. Before we get started, just we need to go back because I just want to announce for the record that the City Council did hold an executive session, be it Zoom, just prior to this meeting. As per usual practice, I do not announce any particular litigation that was discussed. In this case, we discussed litigation, the poll litigation, the litig- the Riesma litigation, the ZISA litigation that's filed in state court. There are two litigations filed by former Chief Disa, one in federal, one in state court. We discussed the state court litigation. We discussed the affordable housing litigation, which Nancy is going to brief the public on shortly. And we discussed two workers' compensation cases, Soroka and Sachi, and, you know, obviously those were attorney-client discussions, but we did speak about all of those cases. So I just want to put that on the record. And then we will add in Nancy Holm tonight to Nancy is, works at Jeff Sereni and Associates, which has handled our affordable housing litigation for several years. The city instituted this litigation to able to ensure that, you know, it would have protection from builders remedy lawsuits. Many towns in Bergen County have engaged in similar litigation. And tonight Nancy is going to explain to the council some very, very significant progress in reaching a successful resolution of this lawsuit with Fair Share Housing, which I think is, is going to be of great benefit to the city and its residents. The council will be asked to approve a resolution tonight of approving this settlement. And there will be considerable proceedings thereafter. There's going to have to be some ordinances adopted. There's going to be a fairness hearing. There's a whole procedure to conclude this. But the bottom line is that Fair Share Housing Center, which is the state's leading affordable housing advocacy group and the one that is the, the party that pretty much every town in New Jersey engages in these affordable housing litigations with, has determined that the city is, you know, prepared to come to the table and make sure that affordable housing opportunities are available for the people of Hackensack. So I think it's exciting news and, you know, Nancy's the expert on it, not me. And so I'm going to have her come in and explain this in more detail, answer any questions that you may have. And hopefully, you know, this is, you know, the start of some real progress in terms of, you know, adding affordable housing opportunities in the city. So we'll put Nancy on. She takes any disagreement with anything I've said, feel free, but, you know, it's your show now.
All right. Well, you did a great job, Steve. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy Holm. I work for Sereni and Edwards and Nolan. We deal exclusively with affordable housing obligations for municipalities across the state. And I have had the distinct honor to represent the city of Hackensack. We have been negotiating, when I say we, I mean the city. The city has been negotiating with Fair Share Housing Center for several years now. And thanks to a tremendous amount of effort from the city's team, we have been able to enter into a settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. As Steve said, as Steve said, Fair Share Housing Center has been assigned by the Supreme Court of New Jersey to represent the needs of low and moderate income households throughout the state as far as municipalities satisfying their affordable housing obligations under the Mount Laurel doctrine. So the benefits of a settlement in the Mount Laurel world are that the city has control over how it develops and redevelops and will be able to determine the best ways to develop affordable housing for its community by voluntarily complying with its affordable housing obligations, which is the point of the settlement agreement that you have before you through the resolution. The city maintains control, also maintains control over its multimillion dollar Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And this is very important because if we volun- if the city voluntarily complies, the city gets to use that trust fund money to build affordable housing in the city. If the city did not voluntarily comply, the state could come in and require that the city forfeit that money to the state and the state gets to decide how that money is spent and not necessarily in the city of Hackensack. And by settling, moving forward and moving forward with this affordable housing plan, the city will continue to be protected from exclusionary zoning lawsuits and other Mount Laurel related lawsuits through 2025, which is a benefit because any sort of litigation would divert city resources toward litigation rather than producing affordable housing. So before you tonight is Resolution 30120, authorizing a settlement agreement. Stop. I'm sorry. Sorry, that's my seven-year-old. Forgive me. Hold on one second. Okay. So what I'm going to do is summarize the, the settlement agreement, which is the basis of, of the resolution that you're adopting tonight. Okay. So each municipality in the state has three components that create its affordable housing obligation. One component is the rehab obligation, which for the city of Hackensack is 582 units. We have a prior round obligation and what that entails is an affordable housing obligation from 1986 through 1999, and that is 201 units. And then there is a third round obligation, which starts in 1999 and continues through 2025 based on lots and lots of litigation. And the city actually does not have an obligation under the third round because it has been designated an urban aid municipality. So, so the settlement sets out how the city proposes to meet each of these obligations. As to the 582-unit rehab obligation, the city has a large amount of existing HUD affordable housing through the, through the federal government, which has, over the years, undergone a considerable amount of rehabilitation. And we are able to count 425 credits from all of the extensive rehabilitation toward our 582-unit obligation. We also have had six residences within the city that have been rehabilitated through other programs, which count toward that obligation. The city plans on participating in the Bergen County Human Home Improvement Program, which receives community development block grant funds to satisfy the remaining 151-unit obligation. What's important about the rehab obligation is that this program improves existing residences for current citizens in the city. So there's a direct benefit to current constituents within the city. As to the 201-unit prior round obligation, we have, because, because the city has provided for affordable housing in the past and we're continuing to do so in the future, the city can claim the following credits toward its prior round obligation. We have 22 affordable units from the Clinton Terrace condominiums, four units from the Pulaski Place condominium units, two units from Franklin Gardens, 50 units from Patrick DeZenzo Court, which is another HUD-funded project, and 26 supportive and special needs housing units from various group homes that are located within the city. In addition to the credits that I've just mentioned, we, to finish out our prior round obligation, we are proposing, the city is proposing a 60-unit, 100% affordable project. And we current, the city currently has four proposed sites or developers for this project that include Hackensack Housing Authority, the Housing Authority of Bergen County. There is one site called the Arena Diner Site at 250 Essex Street. And there's also 251 West Railroad Avenue Family Apartments, which has been proposed by Greater Bergen Community Action Incorporated. The city is very lucky to have so many developers interested in building affordable housing. So this is quite a benefit to, to the city that we are able to choose which project we will be best. Now, even though the city does not have what we call a third round obligation, the city has created inclusionary redevelopment overlay zones in strategic parts of the city that will include, when these areas redevelop, a 10% set aside of affordable units of the total number of residential units in each proposed project. This will give the city the ability to plan for future affordable housing cycles. It will also able, it will allow the city to capture affordable units when, when certain areas of the city redevelop those corridors. There will be, the settlement agreement, once it's adopted, will be placed on file and it will have maps that will be with the city. So it will have maps to show the overlay zones as we're proposing them. Those corridors are along Essex, Hudson, Johnson, and Main. The ordinances are still in the drafting phase. They're subject to court master and court review. But it will provide certainty to both the city and to future developers that the affordable housing obligation is set. There's a density bonus to help subsidize and make it, and entice developers to produce those affordable units. So we feel that is very important for the city moving forward to be able to capture affordable units as the city redevelops. So what happens in the next steps are, once the settlement agreement is approved, we have a meeting with the judge on Thursday, where the judge will set a, what's called a fairness hearing. And the court will review the settlement agreement and, and hopefully approve it under the standard of whether the settlement is fair to, fair and reasonable to low and moderate income households in our housing region, which is Bergen, Hudson, Passaic, and Sussex County. Once the court approves a settlement agreement, then the court will schedule a compliance hearing. The compliance hearing will take place about four months after the fairness hearing. And in between those two hearings, the city will implement the terms of the settlement agreement, which will include adopting the ordinance for the overlay zones, working with the developers to, to solidify our 60-unit project and assemble whatever documentation the court needs and also other resolutions and things that are required by co-regulations. So then, once everything's finished at the compliance hearing and the court determines that we've done our job, they will, the court will issue a judgment of compliance and repose, which tells the world that we have complied with our affordable housing obligation as far as the Supreme Court is concerned. And we are protected from Mount Laurel-related lawsuits until the end of the housing cycle, which is 2025. So if you have any questions, I feel free to ask.
Nancy, this is Kathy. I have a question. If you have the information there, we frequently get asked at our council meetings, or right now, what is the total number of affordable units that we have in the city? And how is it proportioned? Like, how many of them are low versus moderate?
Oh, I don't have that information in front of me, but we do have at least...
I saw some 452 number or something, but I couldn't quite...
Yeah. There's about 450 units that are HUD, that are HUD units. They're the ones I was discussing about the rehab. Not all of them, yes. Not all of them can be applied just based on their age and certain criteria. They, they can't be applied toward our housing obligation, but we do have at least 450 units within the municipality.
That's considered affordable.
That are considered affordable based on federal standards. And then we have, hold on one second. Sorry, I'm just scrolling up. We have... There's 59 units in Patrick DeZenzo Court that are not included in that 450. There are 26 supportive and special needs housing that we can get credit for. We have more than that. We probably have about double that, but we can't get credit for them based on their age or other things like that. And then we have, forgive me, doing some quick math, 28 condominium units from Clinton Terrace, Pulaski Place, and Franklin Gardens.
So we have over 500 affordable units now, not even counting the special needs folks, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. That's basic, but, and not to answer now, which is not the information, but perhaps in the future, if you just could get information to the council, like, how many of them are truly low versus moderate income? How would that fit?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So now we got 500. How many do we need?
We need 60 more, Dave.
Okay.
And I hope we've been in negotiation with four different developers to be able to supply that amount. And, and hey, if more than, if we have more than 60, great. You know, we're limited to say we only can have 60. We can have as many as we deem that we need or we want. And we're entertaining multiple people in that regard.
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
So low and moderate split for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Nancy. And that's great. Congratulations. That was a lot of hard work by your team, our team, and, and a good result. To have a settlement agreement with Fair Share is not easy to accomplish. I know there's many towns that wish they could get there. So we're there and that, that's, that's wonderful. And thanks for your perseverance because it hasn't always been easy. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you and thank you for your expert negotiating skills. So you got it done.
Okay. Is there any more questions? We're going to move on. Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks.
All right. Next size discussion for Resolution Bergen County Courthouse Project. This project is essentially exactly what it says, County Courthouse Project. The county of Bergen is going to undertake a redevelopment process of substantial rehabilitation of the county historic courthouse. This will be the increasing of functional space accounting for changes in design for COVID-19 related issues and the restoring of historical aspects of the courthouse in accordance with the State House Commission. Furthermore, the county will initiate, as part of the project, restoration and preservation of the courthouse exterior and the grounds to protect the building and to become more welcoming area to the public. Is there any questions of this resolution?
I just want to make it clear that originally this was packaged together at their request in a bundle as part of the probation site, but it became necessary to separate them due to some issues the county was encountering. And that's why we're separating this and putting it out separate.
Okay. Number three is the discussion of the intro of the ordinance, sale of the Building Department site. Jim, are you on?
Yeah, Ted, I'm here.
I'm here too.
You want to discuss the sale price and explain the swap so they understand or do you want?
I can explain if you want.
Okay.
Basically, there are two ordinances that are on for introduction tonight. The first ordinance has to do with the funding, okay? And the funding for the sale of the John, or for the purchase of the John Earl Building is coming from an account called the Reserve for Sale of Municipal Assets. That's the account currently holds the money from the sale of Lot C. But we're not using the money from sale of Lot C for the purchase of the John Earl Building. We are using it temporarily. But that fund will be replenished by the sale of the Building Department on Railroad Avenue. So ultimately, we'll be using the proceeds from the sale of the Building Department on Railroad Avenue to purchase the John Earl Building. The first ordinance tonight sets the funding and the second ordinance authorizes the purchase of the building.
So for the record, the sale price of the property located at 410 East Railroad is $3,085,000. The purchase price for the John Earl Building is $2.5 million. So we're basically swapping real estate here.
Ted, if I may, the public may not understand the whole, the overall scheme and why this is taking place. So just to remind everyone, there is a new proposed development that's going to be going on in Anderson Street. And, you know, that's right near that train station there. And again, that's will be a nice boon to that particular area and that particular part of town. And to do that development, they needed the, the land that also encumbered was home to our current Building Department. So as, as part of our, and we needed more space in our current Building Department. And in general, we needed more space for storage throughout the city. So when we were able to negotiate, and thanks to our city manager for doing an excellent negotiation, with our neighbor right here, in right next to City Hall and the John Earl Building, it, it became a very easy decision for the city and the council to, to move forward in that regard. This way, we bring the Building Department much closer to have a really unified City Hall complex and more space and more parking. So it's a win-win and basically at, at no cost because we're actually paying less for the John Earl Building than we're making selling the other property. But of course, we'll use that difference to do the minor renovations that need to be made to accommodate the Building Department. So really, there was, this, this transaction served many, many, many purposes. You know, again, building and infusing the Anderson Street area with new progress, getting more space, more parking for the city, and having the city complex, the City Hall complex now be all really in the same area, which I think is a big plus.
Okay. Any questions or comments otherwise?
No.
Plus the additional revenue from the building.
True.
Yeah, but then we'll lose the revenue from John Earl. So it's kind of a swap, John.
Well, we're going to hang on to every nickel that we...
I think the pilot's going to be John Earl.
The new development is going to be nice. The new development's going to be nice, absolutely. And we will, we will, we will lose tax money on, you know, we're swapping buildings, but
Right, right.
220 some odd units, yes, will bring more money in, absolutely.
So the discussion, number four is the intro of the purchase of the John Earl 220-unit and street. The two things that this resolution does, it produces the approval of the property survey and it will also check on the issues for the contract. There is a 90-day due diligence period that's running. So so far, we've had a Phase One environmental done on the building. I was there this week to review some options with the DMR in reference to the furnace and the heat currently. The building is oil-fired hot water boiler. And the thought process is, is we have gas also in the building, is to convert it to gas, which obviously is cleaner and obviously tidies up any environmental issue if there was one. So I'm waiting for those results. Brian Nelson has been helpful in doing the legalese of this project. And I am confident that on or about the month of September, we will be ready to go. DMC has already done the legwork for a handicap access ramp to the intro of the building. We're going to bring the building up to the useful compliance, but it's not a remodel by any stretch of the imagination. The building really can suit our needs quite nicely just in its current state. There'll be a few tune-ups and, you know, we have to put in a small public bathroom, one because of our current situation with the coronavirus and two because we don't want to have to involve stairs or elevator or access. So we'll just keep that tidied up. But other than that, we should be good. And it's, I think that it will be a positive move for the city and I think it's smart for the long-term plan. If there's no other questions, I'm going to move on to the discussion of the amendment of the ordinance for the County Co-op Board Name Modification. This will take all, it'll take me longer to read the name than it will to discuss the new condo board name. So the new name is going to be the Condominium Cooperative and Multi-Unit Rental Building Advisory Board. Jim, did you have anything to do with this?
So this, just, just by way of recollection, we had actually introduced this at the last meeting.
Right.
And at the, the last second, the board indicated they, the name that they wanted to change to was not actually the name they wanted to change to, that this was the name they wanted to change to. And so, you know, if the board feels that that accurately represents, you know, the, the, the membership of the board, you know, there seemed to be no reason not to accommodate their request. But the request comes directly from the board.
Right.
It's, it's not anything other than a, a technical change, you know, on the letterhead and on the website. So, you know, I, I think they feel this is more inclusive and more accurately represents who participates in this board, which is a strictly advisory board anyway.
Right.
But they certainly, you know, provide important guidance and direction to the city on the areas within their, their jurisdiction regarding those particular types of housing. So again, really particularly substantial with the actual ordinance itself.
So the last is the discussion item of a reference to an ordinance amendment to the city tennis courts. The city had a nice brief ceremony for a ribbon kind of need ceremony last Friday at 1:00. And the ordinance is before us is to basically modify the established tennis court rules that were in place. And it basically involves the ability to prohibit, you can't bring glass bottles on the court, but obviously you could bring a plastic water bottle. It's not going to allow rollerblading. The city got a grant way back when and it's taken some time. But I have to say that the, the final outcome of the new tennis court is rather nice. And we have a few minor landscape issues that I'm addressing this week. And we should be all snutzied up and hopefully we will get a long-term result of teaching our youth tennis and also residents of the community using the tennis courts, which I think is probably overdue. The old one was, I hate to say, not, not good, I'm being kind and close to unsafe. So this is a welcome added to the recreation of the city and to its residents. And that, unless there's questions, would end the city manager's report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. With that, any motion open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Rocco?
Councilmember Von Rudenberger's absent, Deputy Mayor Kennesaw.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Okay, anybody from the public would like to speak, please come forward, give your name to the clerk. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'd like to speak. Can you hear me? It's Richard Soliken. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Richard Soliken. How can I say your name? How are you? Interestingly, on the tennis court ordinance, you seem to be, if I read it correctly, amenable to permitting private lessons going on in those courts. Many years ago, if you're interested in this or not, I don't know, we put a stop to that because we felt public property should not be used for private gain. You might want to think about that. You seem to be continencing that it could happen. Don't know if you want it or not. You don't have to, you can do what you want with it. That's one thing. With respect, I don't know if the city manager or the police department had a chance to look at that traffic light in front of the Court Plaza. Ted, were you able to drive down there?
Yes, I'm gonna read that off that when I get into the next meeting. But you're pointing that traffic light out has been readjusted. Last meeting, the city was advised, issue with the traffic light in Court Street and Main Street. We have had the traffic light readjusted and the other lights in the area checked as well. If it's not up to some...
Ted, I don't mean to cut, it's not. I go by there every day. You can't see it. Well, Main Street is one way starting Atlantic right now. You can't see that light. As you get closer, it seems to be a very, very faint green. And as you actually enter the intersection, you can see it. It's like a motion detector. Now, why I think that's so important is that eventually people are gonna realize, think about it, how do you get to Essex Street from River Street? Well, this is the most direct route possible now. You would go up Court Street, make the quick left at Main Street, and you're on Essex. It's gonna be heavily traveled, especially when courts hopefully someday get back to normal.
Would it be possible that I can schedule traffic on myself and you? We can meet out there and you could get this cleared up?
Seriously, you don't need me. Trust, I mean, I appreciate the offer. I would be happy to do it, but just take a look at it. You can't see it. You'll see for yourself.
Well, like I said, I haven't personally been done to see. If it's real obvious, obviously, I will correct say. If not, I may reach back out to you if that's okay.
That's fine. That's fine. The other thing is, I have a question if I have any time left. I don't usually look at your bill list, but I noticed the city attorney's monthly stipend, not stipend, retainer is there. And that's not questioning that. That's about 100 hours, and that's appropriate for that job. And Ray Wiss was on for about $20,000. I know he's very busy. I had dealings with him. But what really jumped out at me is the Chason firm in five months' worth of billing that are on the bill list, $143,000. If I could direct my question to the city attorney, what do they do? There aren't any trials going on.
When his time is up, I would answer, you know...
Okay, my time, I just would like to hear what it is. And you can, I guess my time is up.
So a couple of points. With respect to the tennis court ordinance, the way it talks about with private tennis lessons and the way it's written, it says private tennis lessons are prohibited without, you know, city authorization. Meaning that if the city felt that it wanted to, you know, make a deal with an instructor to teach some kids or something, it would have the flexibility to be able to do that. I don't believe the intention was to, you know, allow people to just come and do private tennis lessons, but to not foreclose the opportunity for, you know, the city to, you know, if they felt if it was in its benefit and there was times that the courts weren't in use, that it could, you know, make that arrangement if it chose to do so. The council feels want to do that, that can certainly be removed, but it does not allow carte blanche for someone to come and teach private tennis lessons without your knowledge and explicit approval, number one. Number two, with respect to the tax appeal council, you know, usually, I understand that's a substantial number. You know, what happened is, I understand it, is that the bills are normally submitted in a more frequent amount. My understanding from speaking with tax appeal council is that the bills went to our Carlson, who reviews tax appeal bills, and that I guess maybe somebody, and you can confirm this Ted, but maybe somebody from his office, an administrative person is no longer there. So apparently, it did take a longer period of time for the bills to be reviewed and approved internally from our end, rather than the firm, you know, just dumping all of these bills on us all at once. That you could confirm whether that's accurate in terms of the...
Yeah, the staffing and the tax assessor's office is one party. And because of COVID-19 and some other issues, the process or the processing of these bills were not in a timely fashion. They were submitted, but they did not get to the finish line. So there is some corrective action here to get us back into the proper cycle. But right this minute, once again, COVID-19 makes things not, we weren't prepared for COVID-19. I'll leave it at that.
With respect to the amount of the bills and Mr. Soliken's question there, you know, traditionally, the city, at least since I've been there, has had, you know, two tax appeal councils for conflicts and to handle the work. At one time, the primary tax appeal council was a gentleman named Mark Rasso. For personal reasons, he was unable to continue with the assignment. The other firm was O'Donnell McCord. O'Donnell McCord then inherited the bulk of the work. And then because Mr. Rasso was unable to do it, we brought in a second firm, which was the Chason-Lainer firm, to handle be the secondary tax appeal council for the city. As is pretty commonly known, the O'Donnell McCord firm disbanded in the end of this year, and is no longer an active law firm. And so at that point, the city had to transfer all of the work to its other tax appeal council, which is why you have a backup for these sort of situations. And so, you know, Chason-Lainer had to, you know, somewhat unexpectedly have to take over the bulk of the tax appeal work for the city. So there certainly was a pretty substantial transition that had to be undertaken, substitutions of attorneys, I mean, all sorts of work to be able to bring them up to speed. But they already had been doing work for the city. And quite frankly, it appears that the tax appeal bills have gone down since Chason-Lainer has come in overall. So I think it's something, you know, we're keeping an eye on. And I think you need to give it a longer period of time to see how all of this plays out in terms of the cost of tax appeal council. I will note, we are qualifying professionals today, and we are going to bring in a secondary tax appeal firm, as is our general practice. We're bringing in an attorney who has 40 some odd years of experience of tax appeal work and is very, very highly recommended in the field and handles tax appeals, as our attorney, Mr. Poro, does, who handles tax appeals now. But this gentleman also handles tax appeals for many of our surrounding towns in the Bergen County area. So we'll have that, you know, that redundancy, which it was fortunate that we had in the first place, given what happened with this other law firm. So, you know, so with the transition and with everything else going on, and I will tell you, there's a lot of cases, there's a lot of settlements being negotiated. There's gonna be more...
Where's two scores?
There's gonna be tax appeals. I mean, keep in mind, you know, with COVID-19, commercial property owners are going to be, you know, saying their property is less valuable, and the city is going to have to prepare to address those issues. And it's not just gonna be in Hackensack, it's gonna be all around New Jersey. If we don't get back to a normal office environment, it's gonna be a substantial challenge for, you know, every town that has a substantial commercial ratable base. So we're keeping an eye on that as well. Any questions?
Thank you for that explanation.
Anybody else from the public like to speak? Harry, no one from the public motion to close to the public?
Gary Tizano.
Oh, go ahead, Gar.
I'm sorry, I was trying to mute.
How are you, Gar?
Question on, and I know this is ongoing with city manager and councilman Pataglia in our neighborhood on Fairmount Avenue with the speeding issue that's been going on. Today, I decided to leave the house to go to the store about 4:00. There was a patrolman in a car, in a patrol car, watching the speeders diagonally across from where I live, and I'm right in the middle of Fairmount on Chrome. And when I came back, less than a half an hour later, that car was gone. Now, my main concern, and we've talked about this because councilman Pataglia and I live in the same neighborhood, and we know all the issues with the speeders. I would like to know, basically, why that, not that particular patrol person, but why we're not having that speed trap go through the rush hour to approximately 6:00? Because this is where they're really starting to come with the rush hour. Okay, and rush hour is a little longer these days than it was years ago. It's probably more like 2:30 to 6:30 in our town. But they do have the monitor up at the end of the street toward Summit with camera on it. I would hope that the police department really, really makes a great effort, traffic to really start cracking down. Because I'll tell you, Spring Valley in Maywood, today, they had their patrol officers out there, and they were pulling people over. They're pretty strict about Spring Valley from where Coles Brook and Hackensack and Maywood meet, all the way past the Bergen Mall up to Farview Avenue. So they don't lay back. They are catching people. They also have a sign over there on the Maywood side of the Bergen Mall that tells you the speed you're doing. It's a good warning for motorists. I think maybe we can have something like that at both ends of Fairmount Avenue, because where the speed picks up is right in the middle where I live. And I can sit there and clock them with the simple old-fashioned time and distance and tell you right now, most of them are doing 45 miles an hour. Some are higher, some are a little bit lower. I know that years ago, the judge used to set the speed maybe 10 miles over in front of Fairmount School before a patrolman could pull them over. So I don't think, and I'll give you another example, we had the walkable Zoom meeting today about the hospital area. You know, a lot of studies, a lot of studies. We don't need a lot more studies in order to set up a trap to try and tell people you're speeding and you're gonna pay the penalty. So please, let's try and keep on top of that, not just Fairmount, but any other streets that seem impacted by the speeders. Thank you.
Mayor, can I respond to that?
Thank you, Gar. Sure.
Okay, so today, through the diligence of Deputy Mayor Castrino and Leo Pataglia, there was a meeting held with our traffic bureau in reference to either mechanical or physical enforcement of speeders in the Fairmount section. And it's clear to me that there is issues there that need to be addressed, and they need to be addressed immediately because, and Leo Pataglia is 100% right, God forbid some child or some youth gets run over, or any person, it doesn't have to be young, that gets struck and we have a fatal pedestrian accident out there. So we kind of had some, we had a lively conversation, I'll leave it at that, over the mechanism and the way we're gonna address this. So after that meeting, I had a phone conference meeting with the captain in charge of patrol and the captain in charge of traffic, and I reached out to Jim Magon, and they alerted me that they don't have enough radar equipment to make all this enforcement possible. So I've already spoken to Jim. I got the state contract quote for radar units. We're gonna make purchases in. We're going to facilitate a 12-hour commitment to enforcement there. They're gonna pull a special car for this, for the enforcement part of this. And none of this is completely structured yet, but I started them enforcing radar at Fairmount effective today. Now, was it for 12 hours? There are all the bugs out of this. Quite candidly, Mr. Tizano is 100% right, it's not. But the days of not addressing these issues are, in my opinion, over also. So we're gonna commit to this. We're gonna see how we come up with a solution and see how that works there. And obviously, you just can't enforce speeding on one street. So the thing that struck me was odd is that most of the radar enforcement is only in the traffic bureau and not in the patrol function. Well, we have, you know, 12, 14 patrolmen on there. Why wouldn't they be radar units in those vehicles and making these enforcement sections in their zone or particular area? Then it becomes a piece of cake. Obviously, from my prior life, every patrol car we had had a radar unit in. So there was no one excuse why that couldn't be facilitated. And two, it was. And we were able to reduce our motor vehicle accidents by 100. So I have a little experience in this. Obviously, I have the eyes and ears and the commitment from Deputy Mayor Castrino and also Leo Pataglia, that they are looking for results, not excuses. And I commit to that, and we're gonna have at it. So we are in the process of doing that. And obviously, we want to do this proactively because people don't want to hear, you started doing something about it after the fatal. They want to know that these people are safe and we took care of it when we made this available. So that's the commitment, and we're on it. And I'll stay on it because obviously Kathy and Lee and Leo are gonna be on me every day, why isn't this getting done and why this isn't getting cheap? But I'm confident that we can demonstrate that once we have this basically in place, that we're gonna move the rest of these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Hi, my name is Caitlin.
Any other comments?
Excuse me? I'd like to speak.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you, ma'am.
My name is Caitlin.
Sure, go ahead. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm from Hackensack, and I live one block from the Columbus Park. In the last meeting, I demanded that the city council take down Christopher Columbus statue, rename the park, and rename the Columbus Parade and Holiday, but the entire city council completely ignored that demand to rename the Holiday and Parade. Okay. The reason the board stated for refusing to acknowledge atrocity that is honoring Columbus was that history is being forgotten and erased. Columbus won't be forgotten because there are so many schools named after Columbus. Even the USA Capitol is the District of Columbia. The romanticization of Columbus is so disgustingly pervasive. What really is erasing history is the fact that Columbus, Columbus's actions are twisted and rewritten to fit the white Savior narrative of him making the indigenous people of the Caribbean civilized. All he did was commit mass genocide, tried to force Christianity onto them. Even the people of his time, the Spanish Royal Court recognized the crimes he committed and his disgusting moral character when Queen Isabella and King Ferdinand literally revoked all his wealth and his title of mayor of the Caribbean colonies. Also, you mentioned that little children using the park don't think about how Columbus is a horrible person. This is due to the fact that the education here completely gazes over, glazes over his violations of basic human rights. It's even demonstrated through the fact that an entire board of hopefully competent, hopefully level-headed, hopefully rational, and hopefully tolerant and accepting adults leading the entire city can't acknowledge or recognize how morally devoid Columbus was. His true actions of raping, torturing, and pillaging the Caribbean are deliberately ignored. In fact, I live a block away from the park, and I grew up using the park. I, at nine years old, thought to myself, how could a hopefully competent organization of adults honor someone with such horrible character? So to repeat, I demand the city of Hackensack honor that this land is indigenous by taking down the statue of Columbus, renaming Columbus Park, renaming the Columbus Parade, and renaming Columbus Holiday, because he cannot be honored here any longer. One last thing, please outline what your plan is concerning the implementation of civilian review boards of police use of force and accountability. Thank you, I yield my time.
Next.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Seeing non-motion to close?
Offer.
Tag.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Call my name? Aye.
Aye.
You gotta turn your volume up, Ted. I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay.
Me too.
Hello.
Are you gonna do council comment? 7:00.
No, we'll do council comments at the end of the regular meeting. Okay?
Yes.
So I need a motion to close the cow session, please.
Offer.
Back in.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we're gonna sign on to the other meeting. We'll see everybody in a few minutes.